All right, I've shown that it's 4:30 PM. We'll go ahead and call the order of the State of Belavista to adjourn the meeting. If you call the roll, please.
Portillo?
Here.
Sedgley?
Here.
Klassen?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Arner?
Here.
Ellis?
Here.
Floyd?
Here.
All right, so we have four. Next up, we have our regular meeting minutes for April 10.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes for May 14.
We got a motion from Klassen.
I'll second.
A second from Portillo. All in favor say aye. Aye, any votes? All right, meeting minutes are approved. Next up, we do have our public input session. This has been opting for anybody in the public to address the commission. For any non-public items, we do have several public hearings tonight. But if you'd like to address the commission for something not on our agenda, this would be your opportunity. If you come up to the podium and give us your name and address, we will give you five minutes to address the commission. All right, seeing that, we'll go ahead and close our public input session and we run into unfinished business, which we have none. We have our new business. We do have several rezoning requests tonight, conditional uses and variances all those to be public hearings. As we get to each item, we will go ahead and open up the floor for public hearing. We'll ask you to come up, give us your name and address, and then you'll have five minutes to address the commission concerning that agenda item. The word ask, the people would refrain from trying to ask questions from the audience or anything else. This is a conversation between the commission and you and the applicant of the commission, but not a back and forth. With that, we'll go ahead and start with conditional use permit 2023-48692. Temporary conditional use permit operating fireworks stand at 8862 West McNelly Road, Mr. Jones.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
So, like you said, this is a temporary conditional use permit. Took place of temporary fireworks stand from June 22, 2023 to July 5, 2023, 8862 West McNelly Road, also known as the Village Art Club or owned by the Village Art Club, known as Lewis and Springs Art Gallery. Staff would note that this type of conditional use permit has been approved and applied for since 2014 and has been consecutively approved. Regarding the bulk and area requirements for this permit, all size and height setbacks have been met for the C3 district. As far as background goes, the proposed fireworks tent will occupy a total area, including the rope tie downs at 50 by 90 square feet, and will be no taller than 50 feet. Staff has met all legal notifications required for this conditional use permit, having posted a public notification in Weekly Vista on April 19, and then an actual public hearing sign on the property on Friday, April 28. Staff would recommend conditional approval, just so that all applicable laws and comments posted by the chief building official are satisfied in the process of applying for the required building permit. But beyond that, staff has no other comments to add from the work session, and I think the applicant is present if you have any questions for them.
Any questions for staff? The applicant present, would you like to add anything to the staff report? This is a conditional use permit. We'll go ahead and have a public hearing. We'll go ahead and open the floor to the public. Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioner if he can comment. Mark? Seeing now, we'll entertain a motion to approve. What's staff recommendations?
I make a motion that we approve the temporary conditional use permit to operate fireworks stand at 8862 McNelly Road.
What's staff recommendations?
With staff recommendations.
Now, we got a motion from Portillo, a second from Sedgley. Call the roll, please.
Arner?
Yes.
Klassen?
Yes.
Sedgley?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. All right, permission approved. Staff will get with you on next steps. Thank you. Next up, we have rezon 2023-48614, request a rezoned two acre portion of the subject property of 410 East Lake and Shore Boulevard, known as the Lakes Ecology Lab, from P1 to C1. Ms. Robertson.
Okay, I just wanted to start off the rezone discussion a little bit, since we do have a public hearing or several public hearings tonight, to kind of explain how these rezones came to be, just based off some feedback that staff's been getting during the whole certified mail process. Of course, the sign being posted grabbing attention, staff just wanted to run through some bullet points. To request a rezone in the city of Bella Vista, you have to notify the public in three different ways. One of those is being a legal ad in the Weekly Vista, which staff does, and that's normally two and a half weeks before the public hearing. And then you have a sign, the giant red signs that you see around the city. Staff has to post those eight days before the public hearing, and that will lead you to our website, so you can find the information at bellavistaar.gov/publichearing, and it'll have more information there. Or you can call CVS and we can give you information on the request. And then third and finally, a rezone, if it is requested by a property owner, they must notify the public with a certified mail. So the green letters that some of our visitors or guests in the audience receive, those are required to be sent to the property owners within 200 feet of the parent tract. So this one specifically is a meets and bounds request. It is two acres of the large parent parcel, which I believe is around 30, 35 acres. So all residents or property owners within 200 feet of that 35 acre tract got a letter notifying them of this public hearing tonight. And then after the public hearing, which is today, if the planning commission is to recommend approval, it will go to City Council next week for a work session, and then we'll follow to a regular meeting a week after that. And then the City Council has the ability to consider a rezone up to three times or three months if they choose to. So I just wanted to preface our long rezone discussion tonight with that, just so everyone's a little bit more aware of how a rezone works. So regarding rezon 48614, this is just a two acre, like I mentioned, a meets and bounds of a large parent tract. It is adjacent to 340. We will see if you note the parent tract, if anyone has their items ups on their electrical tablets phones. Page 30 has the meets and bounds if they are requesting to rezone. The rest of this will stay P1 conservation if this request is approved. Staff has nothing further to add from the work session. Staff will note there isn't existing non-residential use on there or commercial right now, which is Research Services. This is where the Lakes Ecology Lab is, or that metal building that you will see right before the intersection of Trafalgar Road and Lake Ashire. And then, as I noted, at the work session, staff recommends approval. The C1 district purpose is intended to serve the uses around it and is intended to be amongst residential zones. Nothing further to add.
Any questions for staff? Is the applicant present? Would you like to add anything to the staff report? All right, this is a rezon request. We will go ahead and let the public hearing, if there are anybody that would like to address the commission concerning this rezon request. Yes, sir.
Michael Stilwell, Great Justice Garage. I want to know what's intended to go into that spot? If you guys rezoned, are you going to put another business there? Or if the ecology lab was going to stay in the same spot? So that was my question, if I could ask you an answer for it.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come up and address the commission? Yes, sir.
Gene Worsig, 3, yours, your eye. I'm just curious, it kind of goes along with his question, and that is, if sometime in the future, that lab was to move for whatever reason, could a business open something up there? Or is this strictly, would it return conservation or what would happen? What can happen in the future? I guess I'm a little ignorant on what's allowed and what's restricted.
Sure, once the city adopts a zone, whatever it may be, whether it's R1, P1, C1, there's a list of things that can be done in a C1 zone. So, you know, if the lab were to go away, then there could be some other use within that C1 zone that would be allowed. Give me one second, I'll give you some examples, I know we got it here in the staff report. Some things that would be permitted would be like a daycare facility, an educational facility, a hospital, parks could go there, postal, a postal service, every church could go there. Commercial services like a bed and breakfast, or some kind of a recreation facility could go there. But there's just a whole list, but it's pretty narrow down to be something that would be supportive of residential areas surrounding it. Our C1 is kind of a lower intense commercial zone to provide neighborhood services.
So not like a quick shop or something?
No, actually, no, a quick shop would not be allowed. There anybody else that would like to address the commission? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I guess give the applicant a chance to answer the questions if you'd like to, or pick one up.
Much of what I'm going to say, counsel, has already heard many times, but we have a lot of new people that are attending today because of the public notes and so forth. With all the requests that we have in today, and there's quite a number of them, the POAs intention is to continue with the current and historical use of those facilities. So in the specific example with regards to Lakes Ecology, we are not looking to do anything else. But at some point in the future, we might decide to add on to that building, and having it as a C1 would make that much easier to do so. With regards to, I've seen people write on social media that we're going to open up a Dollar General or something like that, and then that's just not the case. And keep in mind that the POA, a couple of different things. The POA cannot sell common property, POA common property, without a vote of the entire membership, which would be nearly impossible in this case. On top of that, this land in most cases, and in this case in particular, has a deed restriction on it, which limits the use to recreational purposes only. And the Lakes Ecology Lab services our lakes, which is recreation. So if you can imagine, if we tried to sell that land, we wouldn't be able to without a vote of the membership. And also, the deed restriction would follow that, so by selling it, it would not be able, you couldn't put in a Dollar General, nothing against that or anything like that. Also, after this meeting, if anybody in the audience, and I have my back to them, I apologize, if anybody in the audience would like to speak with me, they can meet in the lobby. I'll answer all your questions directly and honestly. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, Commissioner, any comments to the question? How does this request, how does it keep in with our land?
So our land use plan doesn't have a commercial node in this area. It is near a trailside stop. However, we don't have a trailside stop, land use zoning yet, so staff, the C1 is probably the most close for smaller neighborhood servicing services. So that's where staff, the district purpose is aligned, basically with the intent, that's why staff is recommending approval. A C1's district purpose is intended to be within residential areas, but this is not within a commercial node per the future land use plan. It is near a trailside stop though, which is intended to serve, you know, the nearby area.
So if we assume this property was vacant, then would we have the same recommendation?
If it was vacant, yes. I don't base my recommendations off of existing use.
No, but you should be basing it off of land, because I'm asking. Since it does fall under the commercial sign on staff's recommendation, approved. I'm just trying to understand why I recommend approval for something that...
We take into the master plan into account, which most of the time, that is a driving force of a recommendation. However, other things like surrounding land use, the requested uses, how they fit into that existing area can also be used to make a recommendation.
Any other questions to comment? If not, I'll accept a motion to move this on the City Council with a resolution to pass.
I make a motion that we move it to the City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Motion from Arner. Second from Lloyd, if you call the roll, please.
Portillo?
Yes.
Arner?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Sedgley?
No.
Klassen?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. All right, next up, we have rezon 2023-48, I'm sorry, 2023-48669, a request to rezon the subject property of 15120 Jack Crabtree Road, known as the Metfield Secondary Maintenance Facility for P1 confirmation to C1 neighborhood commercial. Ms. Robertson.
Staff has a point of correction for the agenda. Item C, or this item, Jack Crabtree Road, should reflect a withdrawn request. This item was requested after we've notified the public in all three ways. So staff still wanted to provide the report with that, so there is a nice transparent paper record. However, the request was withdrawn. But since the public was already notified of the public hearing tonight in three different ways, staff still wanted to provide this one here.
So the item C was withdrawn, not item D?
Correct. Item D is still on the table. Item C should have the red withdrawn.
Well, we will go ahead and still conduct the public hearing since we denounced it, right?
Well, they withdrawn their application, so there's really nothing to consider.
Okay.
They have to start over.
Yeah. So for everybody in the audience that's here for the one that's on the Metfield Golf Facility, that one had been withdrawn by the applicant, we will be taking it back up again at a later date.
Well, this one, I mean, they have to reapply.
Yeah, it may be a full reapplication, or there may be nothing to be done with it. So we do appreciate you coming out tonight and do apologize for, I have a public hearing on this one, so we can sure that one was drawn. Next up, we have rezon 2023-48701, a request to rezon parcel, the parcel east of 51 Humpty Lane, from R1 residential single family to C1 neighborhood commercial. Ms. Robertson.
Okay, with this request, this is currently adjacent to the Bella Vista POA Water Department. It serves as an adjacent use for parking and storage of materials for that existing or pre-existing use of utility. It is already, you'll see, surrounded by C3, I believe, to the west and north. And if you'll notice, even west of that and north of the red on your zoning map there on page 43, those are actually C1. Those went through in 2021 and 2022. So this is basically serving as a commercial node already. It is adjacent to R1 to the east, so with that, staff is recommending approval of the C1 again, due to the intent that that is to be, that use is to serve adjacent neighborhoods and be adjacent to neighborhoods, and also as acting as a buffer between that really intense zone to the west and north, kind of give an extra buffer to the south and east residential areas. Although staff will say on the east, that is zoned on that map, there's R1 single family house, however, there's not an R1 single family house there. That is the gravity zone. So our trail network basically takes up that whole chunk of that giant R1 zone. So it has utilities to the west and north, and then the trails used to the east and then to the south. There is a large residential estate, which the house that is on that residential state is not near this area, it is way down south towards the road that it has access to. Given all of that, staff is recommending approval. All legal notifications have been met, and then I did receive a public comment on this one, which is attached at the bottom of this report, from the residential state property owner to the south.
Any questions for staff or the applicant? We'll go ahead and conduct the public hearing. If there's anybody in the public that would like to address the commission concerning the request on Humpty Lane, you come up to the podium, sir.
Hello, Russell Bann, 14779 Chelsea Road. I guess you have my letter. I have no concern about the rezoning. We are 36 acres, mostly wild, and my only concern would be having some sort of a delineation between the two zones, because even the road department had accidentally expanded their parking lot onto our property, which they had pulled back, but there's no real visibility for the public, generally speaking, to differentiate between common property and our property, because we're just this big piece of woods in the middle of nowhere. So, as I said, my only request would be to have some sort of delineation between our property and the new zoned property.
Anybody else that would like to address the commission concerning this request? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioner, any additional comments or questions? If not, we'll have a motion to send this on the City Council with a recommendation to pass.
So moved.
Got a motion from Lloyd?
Second.
Second from Klassen, you call the roll, please.
Arner?
Yes.
Sedgley?
Yes.
Klassen?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. The applicant was here, we can't require them to do anything like put up pens or anything like that, but he did hear your comments, so Mr. Jones and the Donald Lab will have a community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have rezon 2023-48641, a request to rezon 4.87 acre portion of the subject property of 504 Glasgow Road, known as the Highland Golf Maintenance Facility for P1 confirmation to C1 neighborhood commercial. Ms. Workman.
Thank you. No one left it since the last staff report at the work session, so I'll just go over the high level information about this. This is a meets and bounds request, so it's 4.87 acres of a large 68.55 acre tract of land. It's located at 504 Glasgow Road. The adopted comprehensive land use plan has identified this area as golf course use within a neighborhood center. The established use in the future land use support the conflict. It is a privately owned golf course, and the subject site does not align with the conservation district purpose to provide publicly accessible open space or protect floodways, wetlands habitats for animals. This property is not impacted by flood zone. The established land use is legal non-conforming. No public comments have been received since the posting of this report. Legal notifications have been met. Staff is recommending approval of this based on its ability to support the comprehensive land use plan. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions for staff or the applicant?
You did say that nothing has changed since our work session?
That is correct.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant? All right, we will go ahead and open up the public hearing on this one. If somebody would like to address the commission concerning Highland's Golf Maintenance rezon request, please come forward.
Larry Wills, 109 Mayfair Drive. I was speaking in support of the rezoning in the interest of making the use compatible with the proposed zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioner, any comments or questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Porter.
When I look at what's being rezoned, that's taking part of the golf course, is that correct?
That is correct.
It seems to me that's a problem, and that they should, well, that they shouldn't be taking part of the golf course. So that's my comment.
Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll have a motion to afford this on the City Council with a recommendation to approve. Got a motion from Arner?
Second.
Second from Lloyd, call the roll, please.
Sedgley?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Arner?
No.
Klassen?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. All right, next up, we have rezon 2023-48404, request to rezon a portion of subject property of 1 Pomona Drive, known as the Highland Golf Club, P1 confirmation to C1 neighborhood commercial. Ms. Workman.
Okay, this is going to be the other part of the Highlands Golf Course. This is where the clubhouse is located. This page in your packet is located on page 60, in case you're trying to navigate to that area. Nothing has changed from the last staff report presented at the work session on the 27th of April. This is a P1 conservation zone. The applicant is requesting C1. It is a meets and bounds rezon, so the entire parent parcel, that 83.45 acres in area, is not being requested, only a 6.35 acre portion, which is going to be the location of the clubhouse and restaurant, and a 1.61 acre tract across Pomona Drive, which is the off-street parking are the areas of concern. The legal non-conforming land uses are controlled commercial recreation, general restaurant, general retail services, and off-street parking. All of these uses are by right within the neighborhood commercial district. However, they are only considered legal non-conforming because they are not allowed uses within the P1 conservation district. And the reason for that is the golf course is a privately owned golf course, and it's not publicly accessible, and it doesn't provide an open space for the public to access things like parks, recreation, things of that nature. It is privately owned. It also does not protect any wetland or flood plain. It's not impacted by the flood zones at all, and it is already developed with an established commercial land use. Staff received one public comment in opposition that was in... Staff received one public comment in opposition that was included in the packet below, no utility comments. Staff is recommending approval of this due to the location and the ability to support the future land use plan. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions for the, for staff or the applicant?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
It appears that the overlay does not include the building that I believe is the Pro Shop. Is that correct? On page 64.
I don't know if that's the Pro Shop, I think that's, that's the golf cart barn.
Oh, sorry.
And it covers, or is that, is that?
That's correct. So the large structure there within that pink square, that's going to be the restaurant, the golf course, clubhouse. The cart, the cart barn is to the south.
It is a restaurant, not the club, the pro shop, sorry.
Yeah, so I think that's the, that's the cart barn.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant? All right, we'll go ahead and open the floor for the public hearing. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the commission concerning this request for the Highland Golf Club Facility. Yes, sir.
Larry Williams, 109 Mayfair Drive. I would speak in support of the rezoning requested for the subject land, make it consistent use with zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to address the commission? Seeing now we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioner, any comments or questions? Ms. Farner?
I have the same comment I had about the last one, that appears to be taking part of the golf course, and I don't think that's appropriate.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing now we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to send this on to City Council with the recommendation to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion from Lloyd?
I'll second.
Second from Dool. Call the roll, please.
Lesson?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Farner?
No.
Sendberry?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
All right, next up, we have rezoned 2023-48664, request to rezon a portion of the subject property at 40 Scottsdale Drive, known as Scottsdale Golf Maintenance Facility, P1 to C1. Ms. Workman.
Thank you. This is going to be on page 69 of your agenda packet. This is another meets and bounds rezon request. It is 1.73 acres of a 64.1 acre parent tract located at 40 Scottsdale Drive. The subject site is currently functioning as a maintenance facility to support the commercial recreation use to the east. The adopted zoning map identifies it as P1 conservation. However, the applicant is choosing to request C1 because it... I apologize, I lost my spot. We're gonna bring it right back. The adopted zoning map identifies the site as P1. Adjacent land use supports the applicant's request for C1 Neighborhood. The Scottsdale Golf Course to the east was previously rezoned to C1 in January 2023. The future land use has identified this area for golf course use, just west of a trail use, which is a location for a micro commercial hub. However, as noted prior, our zoning code does not provide for a trailside stop use. The subject site is impacted by zone, a special flood hazard area, and is already developed with an established commercial use. No public comments or utility comments have received since the publishing of the work session to this staff report. Staff is recommending approval based on its ability to support the future land use plan of the con plan. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions for staff or the applicant? All right, seeing now we'll go ahead and conduct the public hearing. If anybody in the audience that would like to address the commission concerning this rezon request.
Larry Williams, 109 Mayfair Drive. I would speak in support of the rezoning request by the applicant.
Yes, sir. Andy Wagner, 16247 Scottsdale. Mr. Judson, be able to answer my questions? I'm just curious as to how this impacts my property, which is directly across the street from the maintenance shack there at Scottsdale.
I mean, yeah, ask her, you can ask specific questions to the commission, and then if you choose to, you can get up and answer them, or you guys can have a conversation.
I apologize, I'm just kind of uninformed, so I was just curious.
No, no, no problem at all, but go ahead and fire your question.
No, that was it, I just, I'll ask him when we're finished here, I'm just curious as what might go there, because I have a big huge silo in front of my house, I don't know if that's gonna take that down, if they're gonna put something there, so I was just curious.
I mean, I can't, I can't speak for the POA, but everything that we've seen so far from then is not to do anything new, but is to continue to operate what they got. I do know that they need to get in and do certain maintenance and repair from the building if they get to a certain threshold, they wouldn't be able to do that because of our non-conforming use without doing this. This, this does free them up a little bit to do maintenance and renovations if they need to in the future on their current facilities.
Very good, thanks for your time.
That, thank you. Anybody else that would like to address the commission concerning this request? All right, seeing now we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioner, any comments or questions? All right, if not, there's any motion to send this on to City Council with the recommendation to pass.
I'll make the motion to recommend to the City Council rezoning request, 2023-48664.
All right, we got a motion from Question?
Second.
Second from Farner, call the roll, please.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Sendberry?
No.
Farner?
Yes.
Lesson?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
All right, next up, we have rezoned 2023-48673, request to rezon the subject property located on Commonwealth Road, known as the Metfield Maintenance Facility from R1 Single Family to C1 Neighborhood Commercial. Ms. Workman.
Thank you. This is an entire parcel area request. It's 0.92 acres. It is just north of the Metfield Cart Barn. The historic and non-conform land use is a maintenance yard to support the controlled commercial recreation for the golf course to the southwest, and there is a large communications tower there. The C1 District performance criteria have not been met by this request. The subject site does not meet the one acre requirement as a minimum area size for the C1 District. So the change between the work session and this agenda would be the staff does not recommend a C1 Neighborhood Commercial zoning designation, however, staff would support an RO residential office designation due to the site's ability to meet the RO Balkan Area Regulations in addition to the RO residential office schedule of uses, having the ability to meet the future land use plan's goal of golf course use here within a neighborhood center. That neighborhood center is signed to support things like retail, small commercial, to support that adjacent residential land use. The subject site does not currently support the conservation district's purpose to provide publicly, publicly accessible open space, nor is it impacted by a floodplain. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions for the, for staff or the applicant? I guess the question of the applicant is, will RO be okay if we send that to Council versus C1? Any other referring to what? Go ahead. Commissioner, sit there.
So, but it'd still be a non-conforming use, right?
Correct.
So we're not solving?
I mean, it would only...
Other than matching, why don't you explain?
It would only be non-conforming if the POA needs to make any changes to that, you know, telecommunications tower. It's a conditional use in both zones.
Any other questions for staff? All right, yes, ma'am.
Just a quick question. This other communications tower is under, or?
It's under miscellaneous uses in the schedule of uses.
All right, we'll go ahead and conduct the public hearing. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the commission concerning this request? Seeing now we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioner, any comments or questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion to send this on to City Council with the recommendation to rezon this to RO.
So moved.
Got a motion from Farner?
Second.
Second from Portillo, call the roll, please.
Lesson?
Yes.
Farner?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Sendberry?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
All right, next up, we have rezoned 2023-48672, a request to rezon the subject property at Trafalgar Road and Leyland Drive from R1 residential single family to C2 light commercial. Ms. Robertson.
Okay, this one is requesting a C2 light commercial, so a little bit different than the last ones that we've heard tonight, and the others have been considering a C1 Neighborhood Commercial. And staff does have an update from the work session on this one. I have received a public comment, which was attached to this report, and staff's recommendation has changed to modifying this request to a C1 Neighborhood Commercial. It is directly abutting in R1 Zone, however, our code does, if this were to ever be developed, there are perimeter and buffering requirements that go in when it shares a property line with residential. And to the south, there are non-residential uses such as utility and civic use, a church as well. So there are surrounding uses that are non-residential, and the code does have development requirements that anything go here that it would buffer and screen that R1 to the east or the northeast of this lot. It's a large parcel, it's too large for RO, it's almost five acres at 4.74 acres, and our future land use plan shows it near a future trailside stop. However, since we don't have a zone for that yet, staff is recommending approval of the C1 Neighborhood Use, which is the most closely identified zone that we have to the trailside use at this time. All three legal notification requirements were met, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for the staff or the applicant?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
What zoning would be required to build a second water tower?
To do a second water tower, utility, I believe, is not C1. I would have to double-check the use charge.
That's, I think...
It'd be CUP, I think.
So I think public utility or commercial, I don't think so. So it would be, you'd have to get a condition.
Before large scale. So it would have to return to you guys twice, should that happen.
Yep. Do you have any confirmed with staff's recommendation for C1 versus C2? Thank you, sir. Any other questions for staff or the applicant? All right, we'll go ahead and conduct the public hearing on this. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the commission concerning this request? Yes, sir.
Larry Williams, 109 Mayfair Drive. My understanding is that the zoning is being changed to C1, not C2 code.
Yes, sir.
I would speak in support of the proposal to rezon this property to C1, as my understanding is it will be likely a companion site to the water tower and the facility there.
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir.
I think that's highly on the drive, kind of answered, yeah, just answered the question that was kind of happening about the C2 versus the C1. However, our biggest concern is just them building on that property and doing anything that would basically impact negatively towards any of the wildlife that's in that area. Right now, it's a pretty heavy dense area for wildlife, and we just want to make sure that there's not going to be negatively affected by any sort of building in the future.
Yeah, they're specifically, they've not shared any plans with us yet. We kind of just have to look at, you know, what we think would fit there in, you know, neighborhood services. They would have to come back with a full-blown plan, showing how they're going to mitigate traffic, drainage, you know, all those things for us to review for whatever they decide to do with that property. So we will, if they do do anything, we will have more meetings with them and more public meeting, we ought to come and listen in, but this will be your opportunity to comment on it, unless we do a conditionally used permit, then we wouldn't do another public hearing.
Thank you.
That, thank you. Or anybody else in the audience that would like to address the commission concerning this request? All right, seeing now we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And Commissioner, any questions or comments?
I have no comment.
Yes, sir, Mr. Sendberry?
The POA has expressed a intent to construct an additional water counter there. I'd much rather she was going back to the conditionally used, but commercially, it's a property. In my opinion, it doesn't, doesn't drive with the, it's a major issue.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing now we'll entertain a motion to send this on to City Council with the recommendation to approve the C1 zone.
So moved.
Got a motion from Portillo?
Second.
Got a second from Dool, call the roll, please.
Dool?
Yes.
Sendberry?
No.
Lesson?
No.
Lloyd?
No.
Farner?
No.
Portillo?
Yes.
Ellis?
Uh, yes. I think that still failed, and it would have to be appealed to City Council.
434, yeah.
All righty. And just so everybody knows, the actions that were taken today by the commission, these are just recommendations to go to City Council, and the City Council will actually take these up at their May 22 meeting, and they will actually make the decisions on whether or not to rezon this property. Our primary role is to hold a public hearing and send the recommendation on to the council. We do appreciate everybody coming out tonight and speaking on these rezon requests. Next up, we have zoning variant 2023-48432, a variant request on the size of an electronic copy change replacement sign at 70 Sugar Creek Center for the Harvest Bank. Mr. Jones?
So, nothing?
Give me one second, Mr. Jones. If anybody was wanting to talk to Mr. Judson with the POA, he did just step out into the lobby, so if you want to go out into the lobby, now's your chance to catch him, sir.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, sir.
I said, Mr. Judson just stepped out into the lobby with the POA, so if you would like to talk to him, he's available right now. Don't want you to miss that opportunity. So if you go to lobby for, okay, anyway, Mr. Jones, sorry about that.
No, no worries. So this zoning variance has no new updates from the work session. It specifically applies to zoning code 109282, which requires electronic copy change, like the LED signs that you see, to have a screen size no greater than 50% of the total size of the sign, not to exceed 24 square feet, and that's a standard requirement in all zoning districts. The specific request would vary that 24 square foot signage area requirement so that there is an electronic copy change replacement that is greater than 24 square feet, exactly 24.4 square feet. And that's the only thing changing about this sign. Staff would note that this is a pre-existing pole that's been there, predating the city. The height is actually being lessened from 30 feet to 25 feet seven inches, so its degree of nonconformity in terms of height is actually being lessened, and no other aspect of the sign is changing, it's just the active area where the letters usually are, because currently it's a marquee where you change out the tiles and alternate messages manually. This will replace it with, again, an active electronic sign, but the area that's being proposed is greater than what's allowed in code, and staff has no administrative authority to vary any section of sign code. Legal notifications have been met, no public comment, public comment has been received, and staff finds no hardship warranting a recommendation of approval. However, if you all do approve this variance request, we recommend conditions regarding lumens, so no greater than five lumens along the right of way, and then copied rotation requirements, just so that the message is shown for at least three seconds. Beyond that, staff has nothing new to add.
Questions for staff?
Do you have any knowledge of, did the commission have ever approved a, a sign variant for this?
I might defer to Taylor, not in my time, but...
Well, the planning commission has only been considering variances for about two years now. A board of zoning adjustment used to consider these, and in my time, before, you know, my fourth summer here, I've not, I've not seen one. One got withdrawn, I believe, during the public meeting with the BZA, but I've not seen one be approved or request, like, not seen one reach the finish line, if that makes sense.
I think, go ahead and answer questions. Yes, Ms. Lloyd?
Well, when I was on the BZA, my mind tells me that when the CBS was built, we allowed either an extra sign or a bigger sign or some such thing on the CBS.
Do you remember?
Uh, when the CBS, it's been a while, it's been a while.
And that was...
It's been five years, more than eight years.
Yeah, eight or nine years, too.
More than eight years ago.
Yeah. One question I did have for staff, so currently the, the marquee portion of the sign is 35 square feet? Did I hear you say that correctly, or is it larger than what they're proposing to replace it with?
I don't know if that's correct. I think the, the marquee area of the sign doesn't have such a stringent size requirement. I think the marquee area is actually greater than 24 square feet. Pulling it up right now on page, it looks like on the page-
Looks like on the dimensions, it's four.
Yeah, I'm looking at 47 square feet for the marquee area, but where the actual letters are, I don't know what those dimensions are, where the actual letters are located, so I don't know how it compares to 24.4. But at first blush, it looks similar.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. I do have one question.
Mr. Parker?
Is this from the Harvest Bank down by the alleys?
Yes, yes.
Because the sign of the bank at Town Center is gone, and I'm wondering if they would be replacing it. That's just my question.
Correct, yes.
All right, I know we have this on the record, but I'm going to ask Jason. Can you kind of reiterate the commission that we review a variance at, sir, please?
Sure. There, and if you look at your, in your packet, I was just looking at this, on page 97, there's a very nice printout there of your necessary findings. "A variance in your terms of zoning ordinance shall not be granted by the planning commission unless and until the applicant demonstrates," so the burden is on the applicant to show. "A strict enforcement of the zoning ordinance would cause undue hardship due to circumstances unique to the individual property under consideration. B, the unique circumstances of the subject property do not result from the applicant's actions. And C, the applicant demonstrates that the granting of the variance will be in keeping with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance." So you would need to make, they have to prove that to you, and you would have to find those three to be the case before you were to be able to have the authority to grant a variance.
Thank you. Is the applicant present, and would you like to address the commission concerning the variance request? Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Tim Summers, I'm in Bentonville, Arkansas, 1903 Southwest D. I'm here to represent Harvest, and I'm going to give you a real quick history lesson. In 1974, then Bank of Bentonville, later Harvest, opened the first branch on Highway 340 next to Town Center. I doubt there's anybody here that would be around at that time, other than maybe two of us. At that time, there were vacation rentals on that side of the road and a hamburger restaurant over there. The bank has been involved in the communities in so many different ways, and been good business for the bank, and it's been good business for the community certainly, churches, homeowners and all that. We feel this is unique for two reasons. One, the location is off the street. It's not up close to Highway 71, and it also has, the signage there requires manual efforts to put up letters, and this, this presentation would allow them to enter information right then, so they do a lot of community announcements on that, and that would help that. And it's no fault of the applicant trying to answer the different points he brought up, sir. We would ask you to, for a variance on it, I'm not sure of the total process for that, but apparently it's in your code there, so we'd ask for a variance so we could do that. If we reduced the size of the sign, it would have to go all the way back down to 16 square feet, 24, because they don't make them except in those two sizes.
Any questions for the applicant? All right, see, now, if you would take a seat, we want to conduct our public hearing.
Sure.
Thank you. All right, we will go ahead and conduct a public hearing for this. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the commission concerning this request, come up and state your name and address, please. Yes, sir.
I usually try not to get involved in these things, but I'm John Flynn, 12 North Brent Lane, and I did want to mention, I was on the Board of Zoning Adjustment, and like Linda Lloyd, I can't remember every little detail, but we did give a variance at the CBS about the signs, so that was, that would have been in 2014. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to address the commission concerning this request? Yes, sir.
Mirka Street, 4108 South Kino Avenue, Tulsa, Broken Hill, Oklahoma. I just want to make sure you guys understand, we're not talking one square foot, two square foot, we're talking .4 square foot, and this is the sizes they come, standard sizes. I cannot shave anything off of this sign, just, that's all I'm trying to say.
So I guess the question is, the hardship that you're claiming is that you cannot get a custom-made sign at 24 square feet, it's got to be 24.
No, these are coming in panels, there are several panels makes the shape of the sign. So if you decide to take like one row panel, then it drops the square footage to 18 or 16 square foot, the next size. They make them as big as, we just did one for Hot Rock in Tulsa, Oklahoma, which is 60 by 130 square foot.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else that would like to address the commission concerning this request? Yes, sir.
Larry Williams, 109 Mayfair Drive. I guess the variance request is really a request before the Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Adjustment, not only joint duties, is really a request for you to grant a variance to break the law forever, is really what a variance is. Because the code says it needs to be 24 square feet and no more, and the request is 24.4. Granted, that's a very small area. Perhaps a better approach might be for a code change if that, in fact, in the industry of signage, is a fairly, fair standard for an incremental sign. A variance really is a request to break the law forever, so you're granting that. Attorney Kelly, I think, reviewed the parameters that need to be, need to be validated, and I guess I would ask all of you to consider each of those points, discuss them, both pros and cons, and come to a fair conclusion. A denial of the variance request is not an unreasonable thing, given the fact that I haven't heard much positive response to the three points raised by Attorney Kelly, so, again, a variance is a request for permanent breaking of the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to address the commission concerning this request? All right, see, now we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioner, any comments or questions?
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I generally am not in favor of variances, but I will point out that we're taking a currently non-conforming sign and shortening it and making the existing sign portion smaller, and I think both of those actions will make it less not in compliance, which is probably grammatically not in good sense.
Yes. Thank you. Anybody else that have any comments or questions? All right, with that, I will take a motion to approve this variance request. I think a motion to approve the variance request. We got a motion from Warner?
I'll say it.
Got a second from Plessin, if you would call it roll, please.
Excuse me, Warner?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Plessin?
Yes.
Dool?
No.
Sundberg?
No.
Ellis?
Yes. All right, that variance is approved. Next up, we have a variance, or variance request 2023-48525, a variance request on all setbacks for a proposed septic system at 1 Ramsey Drive. And I think the waiver would go with, we'll have to take it separately. Ms. Robertson?
Okay, staff has nothing further to add, but just to reiterate the consideration here, 1 Ramsey Drive is currently an existing single-family home where a septic system has failed last summer. It is not occupied, the septic system is currently not being used. However, it does need replaced, it has completely failed, it needs completely replaced, a new tank, a new leach field. The only place that's left on this lot that is perccable, if I'm, on this lot, on this lot and adjacent to it, that can suffice a leach field, is the two common property slithers to the east. The tank will move south along or out of the gravel slash parking area that is on top of the old septic tank. The zoning variances, which require a public hearing tonight, will be regarding all septic system setbacks, essentially, because the tank and beyond get within 10 feet of the house and the property lines, and also cross property lines that are not under ownership of this applicant. And the waiver request is regarding the existing retaining wall. Any retaining wall needs to stay at least 10 feet from any septic system and tank and beyond, so the waiver does not require a public hearing, however, the other provisions of the Chapter 109 code will require a public hearing tonight. But other than that, staff has nothing further to add. This has achieved POA Board of Director approval for placement onto the common property. It has achieved Arkansas Department of Health permit approval for the placement of where is shown on your drawing within this packet. Essentially, they're working on getting placement approval from us, the city, through these requirements here, the waiver and the zoning variance, as well as the ACC for crossing into that easement. So essentially, they've had, they're crossing off all the requirements to get the septic replacement in. Staff has nothing further to add.
Any questions for staff? Is the applicant present? Would you like to add anything to the staff report? Thank you. We will go ahead and conduct a public hearing on this variance request and all setbacks for proposed septic systems. If there's anybody in the public that would like to address the commission. See, now we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and take it back to commissioners for comments or questions. All right, see, now I'll go ahead and take a motion to approve variance request 2023-48525, a request on all setbacks for a proposed septic system. So, got a motion from Warner?
Second.
Got a second from Lloyd, call it roll, please.
Warner?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Sundberg?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Plessin?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. All right, next up, we do have, as part of that, was the waiver 2023-48526, a waiver for, a waiver request on the retaining wall setback for the same proposed septic system. Any comments or questions from, Ms. Sir? See, now I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve waiver 2023-48526. Got a motion from Plessin?
Second.
Or a second from Portillo, call it roll, please.
Floyd?
Yes.
Plessin?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Sundberg?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. Your requests have been approved, and staff will get with you on your next steps tomorrow. Thank you. All right, next up, we have a waiver 2023-48653, a waiver request on retaining wall setback for a terrace wall in A Hadley Lane. Ms. Robertson?
Okay. Going through the large staff report from the I-4. However, staff really doesn't have anything further to add from the work session on this. This is a waiver request for a proposed retaining wall or terrace retaining wall, total height of nine feet. In that easement between the house and the northeast side property line, about eight to nine feet worth of fill has been added, and that needs permanently stabilized in a manner that is effective, and per the applicant and their engineer, retaining wall is the only way to do that. Our engineer has no further comments on this, due to the foundation being engineered peer and beam, they have no concern with the load of the wall, due to that peer and beam engineered system to natural soil for this foundation. Other than that, nothing to add further for this one.
All right, any questions for staff or the applicant? I'll go ahead and surface-
Yeah, because that house is already built, is that correct?
That is correct, the house is-
We have a procedure where, when somebody's going to build a house, this kind of thing would be highlighted first, and they'd have to get the waiver first?
Well, hopefully the waiver wouldn't be needed if this is done on the front end. This house was built prior to the new grading and erosion control requirements that we have, so right now, staff is reviewing grading and erosion control, so fill, a proposed fill like this, we would have seen before building permit was even issued, and we would have told them, you can't put fill in the easement. The toe needs to stay five feet from the property line, or if there's a utility present, it needs to stay two feet from the easement.
So they did this in good faith, apparently.
They, they, this house got permitted before we changed the order.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Our current ordinance would not allow filling, this could be- Any other questions for staff? Is the applicant present? Would you like to step up and add anything to the staff?
I don't need to add anything, but if you'd like to ask any questions-
Have we got any questions for the applicant? All right, see, none. Commissioner, any questions or comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion number two to approve waiver 2023-48653. So moved. Motion from Warner? Thank you. Second from Sundberg? Call it roll, please.
Sundberg?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Plessin?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Ellis?
No. Next up, we have waiver 2023-48674, a waiver request for secondary driveway in residence of roughly 80 feet of street frontage. Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Not much to add here, so I'll kind of gloss over the first bit and then hit on what has been changed. So this is a waiver on our access management code regarding the number of driveways permitted according to the length of the street frontage of the lot. Just a refresher, 150 feet is kind of the magic number. Anything less than that is permitted for one driveway, anything greater than that can have two. This specific request would waive that requirement so that there is a secondary access drive on a lot with only 80 feet of street frontage. As I said, there's nothing new to add. The secondary driveway is intended for pulling and parking an RV to the back of the property to meet screening requirements. However, the driveway has been shifted east by one foot, which effectively locates this driveway out from five feet of the property line, and thus satisfies the setback requirement that was in violation during the work session. However, the proposed driveway still encroaches the utility easement, but this can be administratively approved, having fill within the easement can be administratively approved for, say, like a driveway, if the present utilities approve and give permission. Staff has nothing new to add beyond that. The applicant is present, if you have questions.
Any questions for staff? Is the applicant present? Would you like to add anything to the staff report? If you could come up and just give us your name and address, sir.
So we say we're still in the easement, but we have, I'm going to go back toward the housing part.
Okay, well, we need, we need your name, sir.
So, so we're still inside the easement.
We need your name, sir.
I'm Jeff, with Modern Touch Construction, I'm actually a contractor.
Okay.
And so, what I'm understanding is we're still in the easement, by a foot, so if that were to move another foot, we have the room to do that. So if that would satisfy this variance, we could do that as well.
Thank you, sir. Anybody, would you like to add anything to most of them?
Nothing to add, I'd be happy to add any questions.
What, you have any questions? All right. Commissioners, any comments or questions? I do, I do have a quick one for staff. I did, and I know I did ask a question for work session, but I do want to put it on the public record. We did have a similar request like this, I believe, at our last commission meeting. Can you remind me of the action we took on that one, please?
Correct, it failed.
Okay. It failed. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
I don't believe that the applicant has demonstrated a satisfactory hardship, therefore I view against permitting this variance request, or regular request.
The waiver.
I'm correct. Sorry.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve waiver 2023-48674. I got a motion from Sundberg? Second from- Second from Doole. If you call the roll, please.
Doole?
No.
Plessin?
No.
Sander?
Okay.
Portillo?
No.
Floyd?
No.
Farner?
No.
Ellis?
No. This can't be appealed to City Council, I believe. Is that correct? So if you would like to, you can appeal this decision to City Council. Thank you. Next up, we have open discussion. Staff, we have anything to add to tonight's meeting or product of new announcements?
I mean, a little fun announcement, so our request for proposals on our zoning and development code reform closed today at 4:30, and we received so far, or as I say, four proposals, so we can hopefully start getting that going in the next couple, probably next month or so. But exciting stuff. We've got some people proposing some help redo Charles 711 and stuff.
It's exciting that finally you get a code written for bill of business.
For bill of business, yes.
Yes. By paid professionals instead of uneducated volunteers as far as writing and handwriting. So, that's fantastic. Anything else? All right. All right. City Council work session will be on Monday, May 15 at 5:30 p.m. City Council regular meeting will be on Monday, May 22 at 6:30 p.m. We have a work session scheduled for Thursday, June 1. I assume we have agenda items?
Yes.
At 4:30 p.m., and then we'll have a regular meeting on Monday, June 12 at 4:30 p.m. That will stand in turn. Thanks again, thanks again, you all, you're great on the staff reports and stuff.
Do I need to bring a sandwich for our next work session?
I think our nights will be fairly short.
So we've not, we've not got all the zoning stuff done, right? What do you want me to do?
I'll do it now.
That was a way of...
We'll have a lot together, so probably should bring it.
Yes, ma'am.